And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic sleeve on the back wall. Before we get started, I'll ask our chairman, please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is community notes. Community notes is a time if anybody has something they would like to say or speak about that is not currently scheduled on the agenda tonight, now would be the time to do it. Please come to the podium, let us know your name, where you live, and what you have to say. Mr. Sherwood, I think you're first.
Hi, my name is Brad Sherwood. I live in Ward Five on Sawyer Street. Good evening, Mayor Isgro and city councilors. We would be prudent to consider reforming Waterville's election process. Once again, we have failed to provide our mayor with the support that would be provided if he or she were elected by a majority of voters. The word plurality allows for candidates to be elected by a minority of voters, and Waterville should consider implementing ranked choice voting to end this practice. Our elected officials would be able to make decisions knowing that they actually represent a majority. In the 1800s, it was impractical to send election results by horseback back and forth between towns in Augusta. We have computers now capable of processing ballots quickly in one session. Minneapolis uses ranked choice voting and has the same machines that Maine uses. We can use this technology to improve the democratic process. In summary, ranked choice voting will cause our leaders to compromise and seek to gain the approval of a majority of voters rather than an ideological minority. After the meeting's over, there will be petitions to sign, available to sign outside the door for the ranked choice voting ballots, if you haven't done so already, for, so far, for Waterville and Oakland.
Thank you. Anybody else for community notes?
Dan Chese, resident of Ward Six, also employed by Central Maine City TV. Just a reminder, anyone that watches on TV, that Channel Seven is, has moved to Channel thirteen oh one, thirteen oh one, and to pass that along to anyone you know that watches the council meetings on TV. Thanks.
Yuri Lessing, Ward Three. Full disclosure, madly in love with city councilwoman, Ward Three. Say it every time, gonna say it every time. I saw Annie this weekend and I was blown away. What a community production, what an amazing effort. And just to see so many wonderful people in the community having a family feel of this production and having such a warm audience, it was just an outstanding production. And it's gonna be up one more weekend and I'd encourage you all to go. I love the theater that's occurring in this town. Currently, Egg Cat Theater is doing a production of Almost Maine there in rehearsal January 12th and 14th and 19th and 21st. And it's all about, it's all about Maine and it has just a lovely community feel to it. And the more community activities that our, our city does, the stronger our town becomes. So I was extremely pleased with both. I'm pleased to be part of one production and pleased to see another. Thank you.
Julian Payne, Ward Five. Gotta like Yuri doing that. I'm kinda the same every time I say Nick Champagne, Ward Five, but not madly in love with him. So... Just remind the community that this Saturday, we are doing police appreciation, but basically anyone who's served in the community is a celebration from. And we're leaving from Thomas College at 12 o'clock, walking ahead of Falls arriving at 1 o'clock. And there, there will, we will be picking people up to then proceed to the police station to Greek Chief Massey. I haven't organized a rally before, so it's kind of a learning experience. Some of the contacts, as everyone knows, haven't always been contacting as much as I expected. So I don't know the turnout, I could be surprised. I know the mayor said he'll join. Even if there's five people, that's still symbolic, so we'll see how it goes and I hope the community shows up to appreciate the people that serve in this community. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes? Yes.
Hi, Cindy Jacobs, Ward, Sid's Ward, and I'm wearing my library hat. I just wanted to let everybody know StoryCorps was at the library on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and it was an amazing experience. It gave fifteen people chances to share their stories. I know Paula was one of them, Tom Longstaff. And all these stories are actually saved in the Library of Congress. We're sort of at a pivotal spot in Waterville where this is probably kind of an awesome time to have that happen. I think things are gonna be changing quite a bit in the future, so the fact that we got to do this at this time was, was pretty special. I have three things tonight. My second thing is pedestrian safety on Appleton Street. I, I've really been struggling this for a lo, with this for a long time. I watch every day Moms with Strollers, the elderly, the disabled, trying to cross Appleton Street. I've gone down many paths and talked to many people about possible ways to rectify the situation. Nothing seems to be really panning out, and I guess, I am asking all of you on the council to please try to do something on Appleton Street before we change the traffic pattern or we don't wanna do it twice or before we have an accident. It's heartbreaking for me to watch.
Is some of that because, is that because of the construction?
A lot of it is because of the construction, and I have discussed that with the folks there. The trucks make a wide turn into the area where they need to get into the site, there's a crosswalk right on that corner. So all the trucks that need to make a wide turn, they turn right into the crosswalk. And if you look at the ramp for the handicap ramp, it doesn't even angle down onto Appleton Street, it angles directly down into the line of traffic. I mean, if you rolled down that ramp, you'd be hitting an oncoming truck. So I did not bring pictures or anything, I have a couple of really good articles about pedestrian safety that were done recently from Winslow and from Augusta, and I will email them all to you to save paper. But I'm really hoping that you'll help before we make a major traffic pattern change, that we really need to address that. We really do have 350 to 400 people a day going in and out of that library. We all know we have to work with the construction, but it's really becoming bad. It's the only word I can think of. And I'm happy to answer any and all questions, either here or, you know, via email or in person, I'm happy to meet with anyone. The last thing I have to say is that our most recent building problem, our, our third roof leak of the past two years, is in the process of being repaired, and I just wanted to let you know, hopefully we get it done before it makes, we're having trouble scheduling it, but it is all under warranty, so it will be covered by the building warranty. So that's my update from the library. And if anybody has any questions, please, please talk to me, and I really hope you'll seriously consider looking at the traffic issue. Thank you.
I have kids that go to Boogie Time, Storytime.
I know.
I hear these things at home.
I know, I know. Well, I've talked to many, many people. I tried to get another ADA spot, get it okayed, can't do it. I mean, we, I've been doing this for a year, so we haven't gotten anywhere.
Do you have any short-term solutions that would work, that would get us through this period? I mean, that you know of?
Well, I'm not sure of the, actually, I think DOT has to give us, they can't really move the crosswalk until DOT approves it, which I understand. I think better flashing lights at that crosswalk, I think changing the angle of the ramp. Ideally, it would be better to put, move the crosswalk up to where the sidewalk matches it, so it would actually, people would walk right from the concourse to go right across, right onto the ramp. I'm not, that's a whole DOT issue, so until someone really looks at that, we can't do anything about it. But it's better, it's better signage, it's, you know, getting the flashing pedestrian light, it's just slowing traffic down there. Most people tend to cross at that little elbow, they don't cross at the crosswalk. And right now, they don't cross at the crosswalk because big trucks are turning into it, so I see why. I don't cross there even. So that would be my suggestions. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for community notes? Okay, next up is the disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anybody in the city council tonight that feels they have a conflict of interest with any of the votes that they may be asked to take this evening?
Yes, I have a conflict with Order 187-2017, which is an acceptance of a donation from Colby College. Colby's my employer, so I won't be voting on that.
Thank you, councilors. Anybody else?
I have a conflict with Order 173-2017, Ward, Waterville Community Land Trust.
Thank you. First up, approval of consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unfinished business ordinance 172-2017?
Move three by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for amendment to order.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, we'll get a roll call, please.
Counselor Soul?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeau?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Six in favor and zero vote.
Next unfinished business, once, Order 173-2017?
Move three by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for amendment to Order 111-2017, sale of city property.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Is this the one Dupont is, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Soul?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeau?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
And Counselor Dupont abstains. So the board is five in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to new business, we have Resolution 179-2017.
A resolution providing for authorization for the city to join a lawsuit against opiate drug companies. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. Whereas the city of Waterville has experienced many of the same problems as other towns and cities nationwide concerning the problem of addiction to opioids by Waterville residents. Whereas officers working for the Waterville Police Department, Fire Department, and several other city departments are required to respond every day to problems that arise because of addiction to painkillers. And whereas to treat and abate the opioid epidemic, the city has needed to shift resources that could have otherwise been used for various improvements and the general betterment of the city. Whereas in 2016, 376 people died in the state of Maine from drug overdoses, and 123 of those deaths were caused by pharmaceutical opioids. And whereas three people died of drug overdoses in the city of Waterville in 2017, and Naxalone Narcan was used 33 times to treat overdose. Whereas the ease with which these drugs have been obtained as a result of drug companies' campaign to make them readily prescribed for common aches and pains has led to many people to become addicted. And whereas opioid drug companies have enjoyed enormous profits with the sales of opiate drugs, promoting them relentlessly among physicians and paying doctors to promote these drugs at conferences while failing repeatedly to successfully tailor the drugs to make abuse impossible. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Waterville City Council hereby authorize the city manager and city solicitor to engage the services of Napoli, Slow Nick, PLLC, and Traptan Matson Bello and Fernet LLP on behalf of the city of Waterville with respect to prosecution of any legal claims against manufacturers and distributors of opioids arising out of the manufacturers and distributors fraudulent and negligent marketing and distribution of opioids.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I guess I'll just give the introduction on this, that's all right. I wanna thank Counselor Leon Fisher for being here, our attorneys who are working with us on this issue. This is a very serious issue, there's not many communities or families in the state of Maine that have not been touched by the opioid crisis. This stems from the fact that large pharmaceutical companies have been allowed to mislead doctors and patients on the addictive nature of their drugs. And I know it's certainly my opinion and the opinion of many others, that what that has led to is the ability for large pharmaceutical companies to privatize their profits while socializing the costs of their products that have affected, that have taken children from parents and parents from children. It's something I hope the council looks upon favorably. It is important that, as a municipality, that we do this before the state decides to have a suit of their own, that way they, we do not get superseded by a future suit. It is something that will take a long time, there is no financial risk to the city to do this. And so I hope the council looks favorably upon this. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Comment and an opinion. I see the cost of human lives and to the immediate families, and in curse such a horrible scenario is increasingly overwhelming. Identifying the source of such opiates and consciously holding that outsourced responsible to higher and safer distribution, education, and manufacturing of these highly addictive drugs is a responsibility all of us should partake in. Municipal resources have been stretched, razor-thin because of this. Inflamed crisis that seemingly has no end to it. We must act accordingly as a municipal governing body to foster accountability.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the council? Mr. Sherwood?
Brad Sherwood again, Ward Five. This is a classic example of the corporate drive for maximum profits. Now, there can be some corporations with exemplary leadership that can, that can overcome, can resist the temptation for maximum profits, but as history has shown, corporations pass on social and environmental costs to everybody else because they don't wanna do that, it lowers their profits. And this is just a part of the system, because the CEO, his fiduciary responsibility is to provide maximum profits for his or her shareholders. So it's actually the system, the structure, that is wrong and is causing this. And because in this case, they not only passed on the social cost, they willingly did a lot of damage, they need to be punished, and we need to go, do, go for this.
Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Thank you. Next, under new business is Resolution 180-2017.
A resolution providing for ratification of collective bargaining agreement, public works parks and recreation unit. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the city council ratify collective bargaining agreement between the city of Waterville and Teensworth Local 340 for a two-year term effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019 for the public works parks and recreation unit.
Move to adopt.
Second. Discussion? Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Wonderful. And I do wanna thank all of you who are involved in that. Yes, Steve, Mike, Bobby, Mark.
Mark.
Thank you very much. A lot of time went into this, a lot of effort. We really have been trying to work with our unions to ensure that, and actually, the whole council's been really involved with the last few years, so, you know, kudos to the council for their involvement, that it's just a very different process than we had a few years ago, so, thank you very much, thanks for your time and your patience, your efforts. And to the employees too, who were involved in that. Next is Resolution 181-2017.
Move three by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
A resolution providing for authorization of the city clerk to approve applications from Dino, Vigil, Games of Chance, and Strugglers.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next, a Resolution 183-2017?
Move three by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Authorizing renewal of liquor licenses expiring between January 1, 2018 and March 1, 2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Just one comment. I'll be abstaining only because I didn't realize that the Uspol is in here and I don't remember the Uspol. So all those in favor? Next is Resolution 183-2017.
Move three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a Victor's license to Carol's LLC doing business as Burger King number 1172.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Well, that will go to Resolution 184-2017?
Move three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a Victor's license to Carol's LLC doing business as Burger King number 1175.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, I assumed there was no discussion on that. Thank you Burger King.
Thank you.
Very much.
We love the Whoppers.
Yes. Next is Resolution 185-2017?
Move three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a Victor's license to Pine Tree State Five Seven LLC doing business as Five Guys.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I just ask, whoops, can, what's the timeline there? Four, Five Guys?
Well, I would...
Quickly, can you...
Sorry.
Timeline is, we're looking to open late January or early February.
Great. I would just like to add to that, welcome to Waterville, thank you very much for being in Waterville, we're very excited, our community is incredibly excited. I think actually when I shared the story on my Facebook page a few months ago, it was actually my most popular post ever. There was well over 10,000 impressions on that, so my guess is, I think people in the area are very excited, so thank you very much for being here.
Thank you guys. We're very excited to be involved.
Awesome, thanks. All right, so all in favor? Great. Thank you. Next is Resolution 186-2017?
Move three by summary only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for appointment to the Kennebec Regional Development Authority. The city is entitled to three official representatives to the Kennebec Regional Development Authority General Assembly.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, Michael?
Any questions? We've had two members that have resigned, Charlie Gauntz and Mark, well, drawing a blank, but anyway, we lost two.
Pittman.
Thank you. Mark Pittman also resigned. Kennebec Regional Development Authority is a consortium of 24 towns that helped to build First Park in Oakland, and so Waterville is the largest out of 24 towns, so we have three representatives. And KRDA is governed by a general assembly, which includes our three reps along with reps from all the other 23 towns. And after that general assembly group, there's an executive board of 12 people. And I started my term as president of KRDA in July, it's a two-year term, so I'm very happy that Counselor Mayeau, Counselor Soul will be part of that First Park, one of the governing boards, the general assembly board. I'd like to have our new executive director come in very soon in the next couple meetings to meet you, we're excited. We found someone that has very, very direct experience in trying to develop business parks like the one that we built. I think he's gonna be a, a real, real hit with what we wanna do out there.
Great.
Any questions? Okay.
Great. Thank you. All in favor? And we are up to Order 187-2017?
An order providing for the acceptance of a donation from Colby College. Be it hereby ordered by Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers, that the city council hereby authorize the acceptance of $33,000 from Colby College for the immediate purchase of a police cruiser.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I would just like to make a statement, just, I don't see anybody here from Colby, but I would like to just say, state for the record how thankful we are for this purchase. This actually came up months ago when we were working on our budget, and there were a lot of really tough decisions being made, and there was a lot of compromise going on. And particularly, I wanna thank Doug Turp and David Green, who came, came up with this idea of buying a police cruiser, because they realized that that is not only a critical resource for the city, but it's one that goes to their campus as well, as well as the campuses of Thomas Colleges and the hospitals. But Colby stepped in without being asked and offered to make this, this purchase, and we're very thankful for that. And I think it lends a lot of credence to the idea of what happens when we work as partners with our friends in the community. Chief, yes?
I'd also like to thank Colby, particularly President Green and Doug Turp, for offering to buy that cruiser. It's critical that we trade those cruisers in every three years, those front-of-the-line cruisers, so that we can keep our replacement cycle up, so that we have safe cars that are out there on the road. So this was certainly just a, you know, great thing for us to have Colby step forward and purchase one of our cruisers. So behalf of the police department, we certainly wanna thank Colby.
Great, thank you, chief. Any questions or comments?
Hopefully, this isn't the, the only gift that we'll see from this, from other entities in the city with other business and private partnerships, I think this is...
I agree.
A great, a great gesture on behalf of Colby College and, and welcomed by the city.
Absolutely. Good point, Nick. All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Ben?
Ben's report. I just have two items. The first is one that Patty reminded me of, that this council took a vote back in September about an ethics ordinance, and three of you volunteered, Counselor Soul, Champagne, and Tate, to serve on that subcommittee of the council looking at the ethics ordinance. And so Patty has volunteered to call you next week to try to set up a meeting, because the vote back in September said that it would be brought back to the full council, second meeting in January. So hopefully, we can get that done. If there are no questions about that, the second item is merely an introduction for Matt Skane. He's promised not to keep us here any later than nine.
Not even close.
Not even close, and I believe him.
I want a slideshow.
No slide shows, we already talked about that.
Public Works, though, did you last week, Matt. Last meeting.
But Mike's offered to buy us all around, it's over street.
But this does continue what I hope we do continue with, and that's having our department heads come in regularly at meetings so that you have a chance to find out Recreation Airport, Public Works. We had Public Works the last time. Chief Massey will do his stint also, along with Fire. So it's important that they have an opportunity as department heads to let you know the challenges they have, the accomplishments that they've been able to do. We heard that last week from Mark Turner about our roadwork, some very, very impressive things that Public Works has been able to do. And some very impressive things with Parks and Rec and the pool this summer, so...
Right. Each year around this time, I like to let the council know how good the pool, you know, it's like the library, it's a pretty busy place, especially for the nine weeks that we're open. You can see Bobby put together a nice spreadsheet for us here, it's a historical spreadsheet on, based on attendance, groups, season passes sold. So if you recall going into the beginning of last season, we did raise rates, we met with the rec committee, whom we have three councilors on, and we decided, you know, it would make sense to, to raise the rates, and we didn't hear too much negative feedback from residents and non-residents, it's, it's still a very fair deal. Our numbers are pretty well in line with what they've looked like over the last six to eight years. to eight years. The revenue that I got from our finance director today, obviously, it's the final for now, but we have a couple weeks in June that were open, so it's not complete yet. So, we brought in about $85,000 at the pool, and our expenses are around $83,000. So, for May and June, which are the two months that we'll be back to work in this fiscal year, we expect expenses to be around 10 or 12 and to bring in 15 or 20. So, we should be, we'll be in the black for sure. Not a big moneymaker, but a great, you know, asset for our community for sure. I think a lot of people, I live down in Farmingdale, and as people as, you know, far south as Gardner, and as far north as Bangor, they know about the outdoor pool in Waterville, so. So, that leads me into a master, a comprehensive plan that we had done in the summer of 2016 at the pool. This season coming up will be our 19th, and as you know, the winters in New England couldn't be more harsh. So, our structure is beginning to break down for sure. It was a group from Massachusetts, Aquatics Group, they're a division of Weston and Sampson, so they're, they're pool pros. They know what they're doing. They spend two and a half days crawling around, measuring, talking with us, looking through our files, and they provided us with a pretty handy report. And there are, you know, there are several things that we need to address. So, I met with Mike last week, and our plan is to get together with our city engineer, Greg Brown, and maybe to bring these folks back, or this, this gentleman in particular back, to begin to think about phasing a timely plan that makes sense for the city based on the priority and need for safety. And it's not just that the, some of the structures are breaking down, it's that when the pool was built, you know, a lot of the, the laws and requirements are, they weren't in place. So, we need to come up to speed with like circulation and water flow, meters and rates that, well, they're very expensive, so we need to kind of update our pool.
It's state law.
Sorry?
State law.
State? Some of them state, some of them federal. Yeah. You mean compliance laws?
If you want to know what's wrong with this country, this is it. If you want to know why everything's so expensive, we're paying people to come up with the circulation rates of our pool. It's just a little commentary thing.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the pool goes, that, that's all I wanted to report. I think soon, yeah, unless you have questions.
So, the slide was closed for half the season as well. Right, is that correct?
Yeah, that's one of the big features that's breaking down quickly, more quickly than the others, right?
And that's a, draws a lot of people.
Yeah, without it, I don't think that, I'm sure that we wouldn't sell nearly as, you know, many season passes, and so it's important that we get that back up to, back up to par. Yeah.
You know, we've fortunately been able to put some money away in reserve. We have.
Yeah, $247,000.
And for the record, how much would it cost to get everything done you needed to get done?
Well, everything pool-wide, it would be one, about 1.1 million for everything to be done. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a big number. Got it. We've talked about.
We're going to be talking about raising the race, those tickets come next year.
Yeah, I mean, we have to talk about how to plan for the repairs and pay for them and going forward. Matt said it is almost 20 years old. As I said, we've fortunately been able to put away some money. I don't think any of us had an idea just how much the rehab was going to take, going to cost. That's why Matt and I talked about having the study done last year. Thank goodness we had done, at least now we know the critical pieces and the estimates. But now coming up with money is going to be a big question.
Are there grant opportunities for this?
No.
No?
Nope. You can't rely on that.
It's always fundraisers, though.
And Matt, when you're talking about like, you know, sticker 1.1, you're talking about, it's not just like patching up the pool to make it minimum standards, we're talking about also the, what's the longevity of this new pool once it, you know?
Was brought up to that? Yeah, it'd be 30 years is what they generally project with, with these types of improvements. But it, don't be too alarmed, there, we can phase things. I mean, there are some things that could be six, eight, 10 years out, you know, that don't need to be done right away. So, I mean, I think that, I think that together we can come up with a plan that works, and we do have some ideas on funding it, ideas anyways, so. Yeah, so we'll do the best we can.
Can I just bring up the, the point about the canopy that needs to be fixed?
Sure.
While we have the Sentinel here, it would be really good because it's the Christmas season, and maybe some of the people in Waterville that, you know, we've all had children through the ages or grandchildren that have used that piece, or they go over to the playground and then are there, you know, at Christmas time, what better thing to do than to donate $10, $25 toward, to the Parks and Rec Department so that they could pay the, is it $4,000 that we need to fix that?
About, it's the picnic shelters up by the playground.
Right, yeah. And they used a lot.
Yeah, a lot.
And almost all of us in our lives have had some contact with that, so we could, you know, even if you gave a dollar.
When it's raining in the soccer game.
You know, if 15,000.
Exactly. Your kids are out there in the rain.
If 15,000 people gave a dollar, it would be fixed.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for reminding me about that. That's, that's a good point. Okay, real quick, Quarry Road, we had our workshop, master plan workshop last night over in the Opera House. Great turnout, nearly 50 people. The folks from SE Group did a great job. I think what I'd like to do is put something up on the scroll downstairs near the finance department that we can, folks from the public can come in and see, and we'll send something out to you all too, once they include all the notes from last night. We were real happy with the turnout, like I said, lots of positive feedback, and we're not doing anything right away, but we need to have a plan, you know, for when and if we're ready to. Lastly, I left each of you an invitation to the donor recognition day coming up on Sunday at Quarry Road. Four or five years ago, we recognized a lot of the donors that got us to where we were then. Now, we're going to recognize all the donors that have helped get us to where we are now. So, in all, we've raised nearly $2 million at Quarry Road, privately raised funds, and we want to thank everybody. The list that the board has been working on is very, it's incredibly thorough, so they put a ton of work into it. It's accurate, it's thorough. We're expecting to have a couple, I guess you'd call them dignitaries too, so we're, we're, you know, we're proud to be putting that on on Sunday. We also have our first race, the Quarry Road opener, beginning at 9 o'clock on Sunday morning. We've got a great, as I, we said a couple weeks ago, one and a half kilometer snowmade loop that we'll be skiing on on Sunday, and then we'll be thanking people at 1:00. So, we'd love to have, you know, each of you there if you can make it. Any questions? That didn't take too long, right?
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Most no drink?
Second.